Come on everyone and welcome to the more meeting of the County Council being held on Wednesday the 20th of January to 2021 at 10am. The meeting is being streamed live to the council's website and will be available to view for a minimum of six months. Please be aware that any footage from the meeting may be used in subsequent media broadcasts. For those watching the meeting via the live stream, please note that there is a secondary link on the council agenda page on the website should the primary link fail. Please then switch to the secondary link. I am councillor Katie Corrigan, Chair of the Council. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members, officers, members of the public and the media who are watching this live stream. Before I commence with the formal business on the agenda, I will quickly recap the housekeeping issues for us all to follow. For those participating in the meeting, if you could please, only speak when invited to speak by myself as Chair. Keep your microphone on mute at all times unless invited to speak. If you wish to speak, please type RTS in the chat function. This will indicate to me that you wish to speak. Please bear in mind that all participants can see the messages in the chat function. Once invited to speak, please introduce yourself with your name and position, unless you have already introduced yourself earlier in the meeting. If you are having issues with connectivity, try switching off your video and just use the audio function. If connectivity issues continue, you may have to leave the meeting and rejoin to get a better signal. And finally, as you are all aware, we will be using a method of electronic voting at today's meeting, which will be the first time we have used this in a live meeting. I will ask you all to be patient at any point where we may need to vote. The head of legal and democratic services will explain the procedure should we need to take a vote. Please follow these simple rules as it will help us run the meeting as efficiently as possible. Thank you. That moves on to item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder to confirm the minutes of the meetings held on the 2nd and 16th of December 2020?
Chair, could I move the minutes please?
Can I have a seconder?
Chairman in second minute, Sam Allen Napier, I'm the Deputy Leader of the Council. I also have the finance portfolio within the cabinet.
Does the council agree the minutes as a correct record?
Agreed.
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 I can confirm that minutes are agreed as a correct record. That moves us on to item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? I'll briefly pause for a moment to allow on the declarations. There are no declarations. That moves us on to item three, chairs announcements. Colleagues, in view of the lengthy agenda this morning and given the time it takes to conduct remote full council meetings, I am seeking agreement from the council to waive standing orders to allow for the extension of the meeting should it go beyond two and a half hours and the time allowed for motions goes beyond 30 minutes. Do I have a seconder please?
Yes Chair, I'm councillor Ozzy Johnson, Vice Chair of Durham County Council and I second.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree this course of action?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate everyone from County Durham who were acknowledged in the Queen's New Year's honours. Finally, I would also like to send out a very big thank you to our staff who have continued to work so incredibly hard during the pandemic. The festive periods, which was very, very different this year, did provide short respite for some. However, many of the staff worked during this time. As Chairman of the Council, I'd like to express my gratitude and thanks to all of the council staff for everything they have done over the last year. I'm sure members, you will all agree with my sentiments and that will place on record our thanks. That moves us on to item four, leaders' report. Can I ask councillor Simon Hennig, Leader of the Council, to present his report please?
Thank you very much Chair, and I'd like to start by wishing everyone a happy new year. It's not been the start to 2021 that many of us would have liked and it may be some time before our lives return to anything near what we would recognise as normal. However, with the vaccination programme now well underway and a wide range of positive work taking place across the county, hopefully we can look forward to brighter days ahead. Since we last met, County Durham and other parts of the North East have seen increased restrictions introduced following the emergence of a more infectious strain of coronavirus. This resulted in us moving from tier three to tier four and then into a national lockdown across England in order to reduce the infection rates. In December, together with the other LA seven councils, we launched a campaign to thank people for following the rules for so long and to urge everyone to keep going. It followed research all seven councils commissioned that found that more than half of North East residents want to stick to the social distancing measures, but some find it hard and many feel frustrated. We're working to support people during this challenging time, but mainly I think it's really important to say thank you to everyone for all the efforts that everyone is making. At the end of November, we also launched our Covid Community Champions Scheme. This builds upon our efforts and those of the voluntary and community sector to ensure residents are kept up to date with the latest coronavirus information and guidance. Volunteers are provided with support and training to become trusted voices within their communities. And again, a big thank you to everybody who has volunteered so far to become Covid Community Champions. Our virtual community hub, County Durham Together, continues to support residents who are clinically extremely vulnerable or socially vulnerable, those who are self-isolating and those who need support to access food and essential supplies. It has also helped those who are isolated or lonely and those who have any concerns linked to coronavirus. And we've written to all residents identified as clinically extremely vulnerable to make them aware of the help and support that's available. Cabinet members have agreed to invest a further £5 million in helping businesses impacted by the pandemic. The Durham Business Recovery Grant Scheme will provide up to £40,000 in financial assistance to companies across the county to help implement recovery plans to tackle the effects of the pandemic. It will support more than 880 businesses and has the potential to safeguard 1,760 jobs. We have also now begun to offer coronavirus vaccinations to our frontline social care workers through a vaccination hub in the Durham Room at County Hall. The site will also be providing vaccines for NHS workers and care home staff, helping us to stop the spread of the virus and reduce the pressure on the NHS. Sadly, there are some who seek to gain from the circumstances we find ourselves in, with fraudsters using the pandemic to exploit people, businesses and public and private organisations, using sophisticated methods to callously scam people out of money. However, I'm pleased to report that our corporate fraud team has helped to prevent 58 attempted frauds since the start of the pandemic with a value of around three quarters of a million pounds. Following John Hewitt's appointment as interim Chief Executive last month, we appointed Paul Darby to the role of interim Corporate Director of Resources. Paul became Head of Finance and Transactional Services in 2009, having previously worked for two of our former district councils, Sedgfield and Durham City, and was tasked with creating the financial framework for the new unitary authority. I know you will join me in wishing Paul all the very best in his latest role. Getting together for events and festivals may be difficult at the moment, but we remain as committed as ever to promoting culture in the county. Ahead of the much anticipated return of Lumiere to Durham later this year, the producers have launched a nationwide commissioning scheme seeking six new works for the event. The brilliant scheme is a fantastic opportunity for people to have their work featured at the festival and will help to strengthen County Durham's reputation as a place of culture and creativity. Last month, we were able to support local traders that would have appeared at our popular food and drink festivals in the region through our virtual Durham Festival of Food and Drink. The event included demonstrations from a number of celebrity chefs, as well as allowing local businesses to connect with customers new and old during these challenging times. We've planted 100 cherry trees at Riverside Park in Chester Street, marking 150 years of friendship between Japan and the UK. As part of the Secura Cherry Tree Project, we have worked with sponsors NSK to ensure County Durham was included in this national scheme to plant more than 5,000 trees throughout the UK. Social care is a key priority at the moment and I know that staff across the county are working hard to support our most vulnerable residents. In recognition of some of the fantastic work taking place, at the end of last year, the Health Call Digital Care Home Programme achieved success in the National HSJ 2020 Patient Safety Virtual Awards 2020. This is a pioneering piece of digital technology created to allow care providers in County Durham and Darlington to record and share important health check data quickly and easily. Moving on to our young people, Acliff Secure Centre has received a very positive report following a recent Ofsted inspection demonstrating that it continues to provide outstanding care. Findings from November's visit praised staff for building supportive relationships with young people and for being nurturing in their care of young people with complex needs. And huge congratulations must go to staff and pupils at Sedgfield Community College, which was named the Sunday Times North East Secondary School of the Decade by Parent Power. The newspaper's Schools Guide 2021 identifies the 2,000 highest achieving schools in the UK ranked by their most recently published examination results. So well done Sedgfield Community College. We're also delighted that a further £10 million in funding has been provided to help support young people into education, employment and training across County Durham. The Durham County Council-led partnership programme, Durham Works, has been awarded the funding from the European Social Fund to extend its support to young people who are not in education, employment or training, or who are at risk of becoming so. In December, we were praised for having one of the top climate response plans in the country for tackling food emissions. A study from the organisation Sustain found that the council is one of only 13 local authorities in the UK that had outlined proposals in its plan to tackle food emissions at an adequate scale. Most recently, the council's low carbon team was named as having the best climate action initiative at this year's Association for Public Service Excellence, APSY, awards, which recognised the very best in local government frontline services across the UK. Our award-winning Climate Action Emergency Response Plan involves schemes such as the On Street Residential Charge Point Scheme, where we aim to build around 100 electric vehicle charge points across the whole county in the next 15 months. This will enable more residents to make the switch to electric vehicles, which will help reduce air pollution and CO2 emissions, as well as allowing people to save money on fuel costs. Chair, even in this time of Covid, it is really important that we maintain our work on long-term challenges such as tackling climate change. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate using the chat function? Briefly pause for any requests? Can I confirm that the council notes the leaders' report? That moves us on to item five, questions from the public. There are no questions for today's meeting. Item six, petitions. There are no petitions for consideration. Item seven, report from the cabinet. Can I invite councillor Hennig, Leader of the Council, to present his report please?
Thank you Chair. The report from before members this morning details items which came before the cabinet at its meeting on the 16th of December 2020 and I'm very happy to table the reports.
Thank you. No questions have been submitted. Can I confirm that the council notes the cabinet report? Item eight, members parental leave policy. Can I invite the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Thank you Chair and good morning everybody and a very happy new year. My name is Paul Darby, I am the interim Corporate Director of Resources. This report sets out for members' consideration the adoption of a member's parental leave policy, which makes provision for all elected members to be entitled to maternity, paternity, shared parental and adoption leave. The report outlines that whilst there is no statutory legal right for parental leave for people elected to public office, the council is within its rights and has the power to adopt a local policy in this regard. Members will recall that in September 2019, the County Council agreed a motion to request officers to bring forward proposals for members to consider the adoption of this policy. This report satisfies that requirement. The proposals contained in the report have been considered and are supported by the Independent Remuneration Panel and their views are outlined in paragraph 10 of the report. The proposals have also been considered by the Constitutional Working Group and the policy is attached to the report at appendix two. And members will find a summary of the main proposals at paragraphs 13 to 16 with the implications of adopting this policy set out of paragraph 17 to 22. An equality impact assessment has been undertaken against the policy and in summary shows that adoption of this policy would have a positive impact on diversity of gender, age and experience of members. Chair, the recommendations are set out of paragraph five to the report.
Thank you. Can I have moved to the report please councillor Patterson?
Thank you Chairman. Good morning everyone. I'm councillor Andrea Patterson representing Crook and Howdenley Weir and I'm also the Cabinet Member for Corp Services and Rural Issues. Chairman, I'd first of all like to thank the officers for developing these proposals which are consistent with the motion that was agreed back in council or back in September 2019. And I'm sure if it hadn't been for the pandemic that these proposals would have been before us for consideration much sooner. I find it absolutely astonishing that we're in 2021 and at present there's still no legal right to parental leave for people in elected public office. And that's why I'm delighted to bring this policy back to full council today where we do have the power and the local discretion to adopt such a policy for our elected members at this council. The draft policy's been the Constitution Working Group and the Independent Remuneration Panel, so I'm pleased that both were happy to support the proposals and I'd like to thank them for their support. Chairman, this policy will provide all members with an entitlement to maternity, paternity, shared parental and adoption leave and not before time I say. New parents do need our support and regardless of whether an employee or an elected member, this new policy will hopefully help to increase the diversity of elected members and bring us into line with our neighbours in both Newcastle and Sunderland city councils. Chairman, it gives me great pleasure to be able to formally move the report and I urge everyone to support the recommendations. Thank you Chairman.
Can I have a second to the report please councillor Tinsley?
Yeah councillor Tinsley, Wellington and Humwick Division. Thank you Chair. I'd like to thank officers for developing these proposals and support the recommendations as set out in the report. I think the role of an elected member is extremely challenging, it's rewarding and I'm sure many of you would agree that at times it can be thankless and it's much like being a parent. I think I'm sure many would agree as well. I think we need to do everything we can to attract and retain, sorry retain a broad range of people to the role of councillor. To effectively represent people, we must be truly representative of the people. We must attract people to become councillors from across the community, young and old, men and women, and people from all backgrounds. This policy will help support those members that are new members, new parents, in their role as elected members and address a longstanding inequality and something which quite frankly needs to be addressed in legislation, as this should be a right and not subject to local discretion, in my opinion. I second the move, the recommendations Chair, and I reserve my right to speak in the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shuttleworth?
Thank you Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. I've been in this council 24 years in May. I've never seen something. This should not be taking place. When you get elected to the council, no matter who you are, you've got to be there 365 days of the year. Seven days a week, 24 hours a day, you've got to be accessible and you've got to be available to everybody. And this, most, vast majority of people on this council are well past childbearing age, so I don't know where we're coming from here, so it must be tailored for a few people. But I think it's quite ironic that the Labour group are proposing this. And I spoke against this in the Constitution Working Group and I stand by that and I'm over refusal of it.
Councillor Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alan Shield, leader of the Durham County Group and councillor for Leitgate and Melty Division. Well, to support the members parental leave policy, which is in keeping with other local authorities. I previously raised the issue through the portfolio holder and the Constitutional Working Group, that the scope of the policy is limited. Given that the word parent can be considered as a double entendre. We can be parents with relative parental responsibilities. But also, some of us have very elderly parents. Which those individuals will require ongoing support and care. For the benefit of full council, I understand that officers are developing a carer's leave policy. To provide people elected to public office with the legal right to carer's leave. I think that we should consider that as an additional scope, but it would come under the auspices of a new policy. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this until councillor Shuttleworth decided to suddenly come on and basically imply that if you want to be a councillor, you're not allowed to have kids. You're not allowed to have a life, you're not allowed to be a parent. I think we live in 2021, as the mover has said, and I think it's absolutely appalling for a councillor to suggest. That a councillor should not be in a position to be able to have children or look after them, in effect. And I think he should probably reconsider that.
Apologies, councillor Tinsley, you've already spoken after you seconded the motion, so. But councillor Patterson has the right to reply at the end. So bringing councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Chair. Like councillor Wilkes, I also wasn't going to speak on this until I heard councillor Shuttleworth's remarks. And I have to say, I found them quite extraordinary, given that we are living in 2021. And I never thought I'd be in full council agreeing totally with what councillor Wilkes said, but I do. Fully agree with what he said. When we enter local politics, we know that there's a huge commitment. But that doesn't mean that we stop living our own lives. And they're all very different lives. And yes, we're all, some of us are of a certain age, some of us are much younger. I mean, do we really, really, are you really saying councillor Shuttleworth, you don't need to answer, but really saying? That you can only be a councillor if you don't have children, you commit to not having children and not having a life. There are other aspects of our lives that we all, we all get involved in. So really, I mean, I think that that's, it's quite an extraordinary remark and one that I hope is not really taken seriously in this council. When it comes to this motion, I hope everyone will support it. Thank you.
The man's in the dark ages.
Councillor McCain?
Thank you, Chair. I also would like to come in and agree with councillor Wilkes and councillor Gunn. As a local member, the people who I tend to work with a lot are actually the younger women in my area. They're parish councillors, they're on the PTA, they're school governors, they're the ones who get things done in communities. And they're the ones who are really in touch with a lot of the things that are going on around and about our villages. And to say that there has to be a choice between being able to be a parent and to be able to serve and represent your area. Any suggestion of that, I think, is absolutely wrong. I'm a young woman myself and I take on bridge at the idea that I can't serve my community and also be a parent at some point. And I'd just like to thank all the councillors who have already spoken out on that because I don't think that that view. Is in any way reflective of the vast majority of the people of County Durham, who I think would like to see a balanced and reflective council that really represents them.
Councillor Hobgood?
Thanks, Chair. Again, I wasn't going to speak on this because I thought it was quite agreeable by most people, so I'm quite surprised. And there has been an amendment made to what was originally proposed. And that is to make sure that single member wards are accounted for, so there will always be representation for people. And we are elected representatives for the public. And the public will continue to have that. That doesn't mean to say that we shouldn't be entitled and people shouldn't be entitled. To have leave like anyone else with any other option that they're taking life. And I'm sure there's many people on here now would have benefited from this over the last few years. And it should be there for people moving forward to attract all sorts of people from all ages, all genders into public office. Knowing that this is in place for them, but they also know that there is something in place. That the people who have elected them will continue to be represented even while they're taking paternity or maternity leave. So I would encourage everyone, please, to support this.
Thank you. Councillor Shuttleworth, you've already spoken, so you can't speak again during the debate. So councillor Settles?
Hello, thank you, Chair. Councillor Angela Settles represents Easington Division. I'm also the portfolio holder for social inclusion. For Durham County Council. And for a council that prides itself on equality inclusion, I'm absolutely appalled that councillor Shuttleworth has come out with the comments that he's made. I think that firstly, we're a forward thinking council. We're a council that prides itself on equality and diversity. We're a council that prides itself on all the social inclusion that we do for all of our residents, our workforce. And why shouldn't that include members, to be brutally honest? The other suggestion that you made that this policy won't apply to the majority of us. Can't remember your exact words, so I don't want to quote you councillor Shuttleworth, but we all heard what you said, I think is also appalling. So for me, I'm fully supportive of this motion. Like councillor Hobgood said, there's been an amendment to include single member wards. And I just feel that this is definitely forward thinking, it's very inclusive, it's very, it's very equal and it offers everybody. Whether elected or working for the council, the same rights that they deserve and are entitled to. I'll be supporting this motion and I urge all other colleagues to support this motion going forward, sorry, this report going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I bring in, back in councillor Patterson has the right to reply?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'm really disappointed with the outdated backward thinking discriminatory comments there from councillor Shuttleworth this morning. Especially given this policy's been to the Constitution Working Group. But despite that, I'm not going to let it deter me this morning because this policy is about change. And it's about giving elected members the right to parental leave. And I'm sure every councillor across this meeting this morning, who, especially those that's parents and grandparents. Recognise the importance and the value that this particular policy brings. Chairman, I just wanted also to pick up about councillor Shield's point about the separate carers leave policy. And I'd just like to give some reassurances there that the comments from the Constitutional Working Group will be taken forward and we will look at that separately. Chairman, as I understand from a point of order, the recommendations have been moved and seconded. Where in that, I understand that councillor Shuttleworth's urge to, you know, go against the recommendations wasn't an amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that and ask that we move to the vote.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to approve the adoption of the policy attached to Appendix Two of the report?
Agreed.
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 We will take two of them, so I'll hand over to the head of Legal Democratic Services.
Thank you, Chair. So as we notified at the start of the meeting, we will be using an electronic voting solution for the first time today. So when the chair indicates that the vote is open, a box will appear on your screens. This will show the title of the matter that we are voting on, so in this case, the members parental leave policy. With options to vote for, against or abstain. Simply select your preference and click submit, and it's very important that you click the submit button. And once you've done that, a green tick will appear confirming your vote's choice. And the tick indicates that your vote is cast. You can then click done and the box will disappear from your screen.
Yeah, we will now open the vote. We'll now be closing the vote.
Chair, can I just say that? My mind does not appear to have. It does now. It's okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Any other members have any questions or comments?
Yes, Chair. It's councillor Pauline Creathorne. My votes come on the side of the screen in chat. And it had a press bond submit, but a green tick hasn't come for me to press done. It hasn't come up on the middle of my screen.
Okay, if you voted during the chat, it won't show you that your vote's been recorded, but if you've clicked what you wanted to vote, it will be shown.
Right, thank you. Thanks, members. We'll now read out the votes. For parental leave policy, 100, against, three, and abstentions, three. Therefore, the policy is agreed. That moves on to item nine, Members' Allowance Scheme 2021 to 2022. Can I invite the Corporate Director of Resources to present their report?
Thank you, Chair. This report sets out the findings and recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel. Who undertake an annual review with the Members' Allowance Scheme. The proposals in this report relate to the scheme that will apply next financial year. It's a statutory requirement of the council to have a scheme which sets out details of the allowances and expenses paid to members in fulfilling their role. The current scheme has remained unchanged since 2014-15, when the mileage rate paid was reduced to 45p per mile. No other changes have been made since, and the current members allowances have remained unchanged since local government review in 2009. The scheme needs to be reviewed on an annual basis and in considering any changes, councillors are required to have regard to any recommendations made by the Independent Remuneration Panel. Though they are not bound by its recommendations and are free to make its own decisions. Paragraphs 10 to 15 of the report set out the considerations and recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel. Who met in November of last year and have recommended an increase of 0.7% be considered next year. In line with the Consumer Price Index. The proposals from the Independent Remuneration Panel are being considered by the Constitutional Working Group. Who met in December and again in January to consider this matter. The CWG requested and considered a range of additional information and members will note the benchmark and comparisons that are contained in Appendix Two to the report. The Constitutional Working Group's considerations are contained in paragraphs 16 to 19. Which include a consideration of linking the annual review of allowances to the National Joint Council. Members will note that the CWG were not minded to support the recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel. But felt that it was a matter for council to decide and therefore no specific recommendations are made to council today. By the Constitutional Working Group in this respect. The recommendations are set out at paragraph five to the report, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a move to the recommendation, please?
Chair, as Chair of the Constitution Working Group, I would like to propose that notwithstanding the recommendations. Made by the Independent Remuneration Panel, that no change be made to the existing Members' Allowance Scheme for 21 and 22. And as I have said in past years, I do also continue to believe that these decisions should not come to members at full council. However, this change would require a national change. And the Constitution Working Group at its last meeting did agree to make representations to government on this. And I would like to propose that this also be part of our recommendations. Thank you.
Can I have a second to the recommendations, please?
Formally second, Chairman.
Do you reserve in the right to speak, councillor? Councillor Nebbia?
No, I'm just formally seconding, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate using the chat function? Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I support the recommendation as just given by the leader there. Not to accept the recommended increase and also to make representations to government about the system of how this operates. I would say, given that there hasn't been an increase since 2009. A modest increase of 0.7% is not undeserved, but clearly now is not the time, given the effects of Covid on the finances of many of our residents and businesses, to be accepting. Any increase. If I noted the comments of the resources director about the CWP and how we've looked at it thoroughly and the additional information. At Appendix Two. And I would refer members to have a read of Appendix Two if they haven't already, which looks at the cost per head of allowances. Which some would say is a better measure of actual allowance than the actual bold figure. Because it's the actual cost to the residents, the number of residents we service is a measure of our workload. And that shows that we are fifth in the regional league table. On the data that we've been able to get and possibly lower down, given that we've been unable to obtain data from four north east councils. So I think it's important that in comparing with other areas, we do start to look at the cost per head and not just the actual bold figure. So while it's not the time to take this increase, it wouldn't be appropriate right now. It is clear that given that our allowances haven't increased since 2009. And given that other councils in the region are steadily increasing theirs and our position is slipping. At some point, this will have to be addressed, but that's a matter for the new council, I would say, and not for today. So I would support the recommendations made by the leader and seconded by the deputy. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Hobgood?
Thanks, Chair. I would also support that we don't look to take any increase. But I strenuously support that we write and lobby government to. but I strenuously support that we write and lobby government to change the way that this is done, because it comes forward every year that we have to look at this. And it's just not right that, as an authority, we should be voting as to whether we get a pay increase or an allowance increase. So I think it needs to go to government for it to be changed across the board for all local authorities. Thank you.
Councillor Shawlworth?
Thank you, Chairman. I think, given where we are with hemorrhaging jobs and Covid, and more jobs will be hemorrhaging, I think it's the right thing to do that we don't take any increase. And I would support the leader's recommendations.
Is any more members wishing to speak? I'll briefly pause for any more requests. So councillors have agreed the recommendations moved and seconded. There's no dissent. Therefore, can we agree without the vote? Can we just take an agreement?
Agreed.
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 Thank you, members. I can confirm that the recommendation is agreed. That moves on to item 10, Independent Persons. Going to invite the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report.
Thank you, Chair. This report seeks council approval to the recruitment of two new independent persons in relation to standards and to an amendment to the Constitution covering the duration of the term of office for such persons going forward. The report outlines that the current arrangements are not in line with recommended good practice as set out in the Committee for Standards in Public Life Report on Ethical Standards that was published in January 2019. The report sets out the role of the independent persons at paragraphs 10 and 11, and details of the current postholders, who have been in position since 2012, with their tenure extended for a further four years in 2016 and their positions further extended in 2020 in response to the pandemic. The best practice recommendation for such roles is that they should be for a two-year period and be subject to just one extension. The proposal is to bring our arrangements in line with best practice, and the report outlines the proposed recruitment of two new independent persons. And the recruitment timelines are set out at paragraph 17 to the report. The recommendations, Chair, are set out in paragraph eight.
Thank you. Move the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the report?
I'll second that. Councillor Jim Atkinson from Eglavie.
If any members wishes to speak on the report, can you please indicate using the chat function? I don't have any more requests. Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations detailed in the report? And in doing so, can I seek the agreement of council without the need for a vote?
Agreed.
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 Thank you, members. Can I confirm that the recommendations are agreed? That moves on to item 11, Annual Report of the Standards Committee. Can I ask the Chair of the Standards Committee to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. As Chair of the Standards Committee, I am pleased to present the annual report of the committee for the years 2019 to 2020. Members will note that there's been a delay in this report being presented due to disruption of the meeting timetable as a consequence of the Covid-19 pandemic. The report, therefore, covers the work of the committee in 2019 to 20, as well as a brief interim update to provide assurance that work continues to promote the principles and values of good governance across the County Council and town and parish councils into 2020, 2021. The report sets out the code of conduct complaints, which were considered in 2019 and 20. Members will see from the report that there were 47 fewer complaints than 2018 to 19. Therefore, the number of complaints received was more comparable with the number received in the years prior to 2018 to 19. In September 2019, a meeting of the Standards Committee was held to consider five codes of conduct complaints relating to a town councillor. The panel found that there had been a breach of code of conduct and imposed sanctions to censor the member, required the member to undergo training and to provide a written apology to two of the complainants. Standards Committee considered the Committee of Standards in Public Life Report in relation to ethical standards, which was published on the 30th of January 2019. As a result, the Standards Committee have agreed recommendations to council to approve an update to the code of conduct to fully implement the best practice recommendations. The committee also reviewed the Member Code of Conduct on other relevant interests and has made recommendations to council, which will be considered as part of the annual review of the Constitution. Despite the challenges presented by the pandemic, the committee has remained dedicated to championing and promoting high standards of conduct within the County Council, as well as town and parish councils, through its delivery of the work programme for 2020, 2021. This has included considering arrangements for independent persons, which have been already covered today on the agenda. Full details of the committee's work over the course of 2020 and 21 will be presented to council after June 2021. Finally, I'd like to thank the management officer and her team for their continuing work with the committee in assisting to ensure that high standards are achieved by all locally elected members. I ask that the report be noted, please. Thank you.
Thank you. If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate using the chat function? I've had no more requests. Therefore, can I ask the council to note the annual report?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. That moves on to item 12, Report of the Audit Committee from the period of September 2019 to August 2019. Can I ask the Chair of the Audit Committee to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. I am councillor Edward Bell with the Dean's Side Division in Seum, Chair of the Audit Committee. It's considered good practice for the Audit Committee to report on its work to full council on an annual basis. And as Chair of the council's Audit Committee, I'm pleased to present this update to council today. This report covers the work of the Audit Committee during the period September 19 to August 20. Through careful consideration and challenge of a wide range of officer reports presented, the Audit Committee has fulfilled its role in gaining assurances as to the adequacy and effectiveness of the council's governance arrangements, including the effectiveness of the risk management framework and associated control environment. In relation to financial reporting of the council's statement of accounts, the Audit Committee has ensured that any issues arising from the process of compiling, auditing and certifying the council's accounts were dealt with properly. This has been achieved due to extremely challenging circumstances following the onset and continued impact of the coronavirus pandemic, which necessitate the cancelling of two of our meetings and the reschedule of business to be considered. The introduction of virtual meetings did, however, enable the committee meetings to resume. The three key areas of the committee's work I would particularly like to draw your attention to. And the first one is the role and work of the internal audit. The Audit Committee continues to promote and champion the work of internal audit across the organisation. As such, the committee agreed the internal audit strategy and charter and the internal audit plan proposed by the Chief Internal Auditor and Corporate Fraud Manager. The committee has challenged and supported the work that was proposed and agreed the work programme for the year. The work completed by internal audit continues to provide assurance to the committee that the council's control environment, government's arrangements and management of its risks is sound. Internal audit continues to update the committee on a quarterly basis, and the committee provides the appropriate challenge. A number of officers have attended to provide explanations and answer questions across the year. Secondly, the external audit of the council's statements of accounts. In June, the committee received a report from the Corporate Director of Resources, which presented the draft un-audited statement of accounts for the council ending the 31st of March 2020. The draft accounts were certified and provided to external audit within the statutory deadline, which, due to the impact of Covid on local authorities, was extended from 31st of May to 31st of August. The deadline for publication of the final audit accounts was also moved from the 31st of July to the 30th of November. The accounts were, however, approved by the Audit Committee at its September meeting, a substantial achievement, particularly when we consider that many other authorities, as many as half, I believe, were not able to meet their statutory reporting deadlines this year. Finally, I would like to draw members' attention to the continuing good work of the council's corporate fraud team. The interim chief internal auditor and fraud manager continues to update the Audit Committee on the excellent work being completed in terms of proactive counter-fraud work. The report demonstrates across the council activity that has been completed in order to deter fraud from occurring at the outset and the prevention is and that prevention is indeed better than cure. To give some context, the corporate fraud team from 1919 to 2020 completed 721 investigations over a wide range of areas, including blue badge abuse, council tax claims, bogus insurance claims and housing tenancy, to name a few. And over the year, the team have either intercepted potential and recovered 3.5 million of public money. I'll just repeat that recovered 3.5 million of public money from fraudulent activity. As a result of this, the team has an excellent local and national profile for their work. They have developed strong partnerships with other public sector organisations, which continues to enhance the reputation that the council has. I'm sure you'll enjoy joining the committee in congratulation with the team and support our commitment to continue to fight fraud locally, regionally and nationally. In summary, Chairman, whilst the report is largely from information, I would note that I consider the effectiveness of the Audit Committee to be excellent. We continue to improve and I'm happy to move the recommendation tabled in the report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate using the chat function? I'll briefly pause for any requests. I've got no requests, so can I ask the council to note the report?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. That moves on to item 30, Motions on Notice. Before we commence with the next item, I will hand over Telen Lynch, Head of Legal and Democratic Services, to remind us of the rules in relation to motions.
Thank you, Chair. Members will be aware that the usual rules of debate apply. Movers of a motion have five minutes to speak, seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time. No further amendment may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, that becomes a substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate moves back to the original motion.
Thank you. Can I now invite councillor Owen Temple to move his motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Owen Temple from Concert. I find myself again proposing a motion which looks dry as dust, but is actually about a key aspect of democracy, the commitment of democratic decision-makers to be as open as is possible with the people on whose behalf they are acting. It's how we earn and deserve their trust. In a perfect world, every public decision would be made open to public scrutiny. That's why courts try people in public. It's why the lottery is drawn in public. That way, everything is above board and is seen to be above board. But we don't live in a perfect world, so on rare occasions, a democratic decision can't be made in public, just like courts occasionally have to sit in private. But those occasions have to be kept to a minimum and operate within a tight framework to protect the public's right to know as much as it can, as soon as it can. We have those rules here in council. They're set out in law and supervised by our Head of Legal Services. I respect both. But that's not all there is to it. The law sets out when the public and press can be denied the information to be considered in a council meeting. It also says that it should only apply if and so long as the justification for confidentiality outweighs the public's need for transparency. That's okay when you're asking press and public to leave a meeting at that precise moment. It may well be in the public interest for the decision to be made in private. It's not okay, though, when you permanently exclude the press and public from knowing what the decision was and how it was taken. That damages democracy. This all sounds a bit theoretical, so let's make it real. In 2009, I asked a question on a report to Cabinet about a loan for one and a half million pounds, which had already been made to Durham County Cricket Club. I asked whether this was strictly commercial or whether it was a soft loan made for other reasons. That part of the meeting was held behind closed doors, and no member of the press or public will ever know what was said, because the papers have not been published. And the minute on the council's website says only that the council noted the still-banished report. The event's history now. Even the loaner's gone, not repaid, but transmogrified into preference shares. What's not history, though, is local people's feeling that stuff is being hidden from them. And not just hidden briefly and for good reason, but still hidden for years after there could be any good reason for it not to be made public. It was true again about two years ago. Another secret report to Cabinet was about self-build. It was described as urgent because the land release grant from government had to be spent by March 2020. It's hard to see, then, why this report should remain unpublished in 2021, but it does. The report affected an estate in my own area, but I couldn't tell them then, and they still can't read it now. You all know how the rules work. To see one of these reports, councillors have to sign a contract to keep it confidential. That puts us in a difficult position, because the contract we sign with the council is not temporary, and we either breach that written contract or our unwritten contract with the electors. And that's why I think every councillor should support this motion. The exclusion of this council's documents from public view currently has no end. The council's website of meeting agendas, papers and minutes go on excluding those papers. Whether or not the reason for that exclusion is still valid.
A minute remaining, councillor.
Thank you. How can that be right? How can it meet our constitutional commitment to be as open as possible about all the decisions and actions we take? It can't, and we know it can't. And that's why I'm asking for this review. And that's why I'm asking for this review, to find a way of making sure that all council meeting papers which have been legally excluded from public view are published once the need to know trumps the need for secrecy. Passing this motion would show that we are all committed to transparency. Passing it will build trust in local democracy. Now, the last time I brought a motion which brought good democratic sense, the ruling party told me I was pushing at an open door. I can only hope I'm pushing at an open door again. Please support the motion.
Thank you. The motion requires a secondar?
Yeah, Chair, councillor Hopgood. So I'd like to formally second the motion and doing so wish to speak now, rather than reserve the right to come back later. Councillor Temple has set out clearly and eloquently why we wish to have a policy put into place that demonstrates in practice, rather than theory, this council's commitment to be open, fair and transparent in decision-making as written into its constitution. Whilst acknowledging there will be times when decisions need to be made in private, there will also be a time at some point in the future that this information can be made public. This currently never happens. We are simply requesting that a policy is established to see an end to this practice and that in future, Part B documents will be reviewed within given timescales to establish the point at which they can be released into the public domain. Even the government accepts that sensitive papers and documents should be released after 30 years. There really is no excuse any longer for Durham County Council to conceal information indefinitely. I therefore ask you all to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? Councillor Hennig?
Chair, as Chair of the Constitution Working Group, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion moved by councillor Temple this morning. I have shared that with officers, so hopefully that'll be able to be shared. Chair, I have no disagreement with the sentiments expressed in the first paragraphs of the motion. As stated in our constitution, the council is committed to open, fair and transparent decision-making and that is why so few items in our Cabinet and council meetings are considered in Part B of agendas. Fewer than 10 items per year in cabinets and none at all that I can ever remember in meetings of full council. This is a substantially lower number than many other councils. However, we all have to accept that it sometimes isn't possible for everything to be considered in public and a clue to why items sometimes need to be held in Part B can be found in an analysis of the meetings which have most Part B items. The largest number of Part B items, about five per month, have been on the agendas of our various licensing panels and committees. Now, I don't serve on any of those committees, but I understand this to be because of confidential details involving licensed premises, which may include personal details, police reports, business details. It's perfectly understandable as to why this is confidential and our legal officers properly and legally advise that it's considered in Part B. I'm not quite sure why such private details should suddenly cease to be confidential a period of time after the meeting. That is the entire premise on which this motion is based. The second largest number of Part B items can be found on the agendas of the Pension Fund Committee. Again, I presume this to be because of private financial information in the reports, although I don't sit on the Pension Funds Committee. Interestingly, the last meeting of this committee had more Part B items, 11, than had been to the Cabinet in an entire year. Perhaps the Vice Chair of Pensions, someone called councillor Owen Temple, might like to comment on this. The third and fourth highest number of exempt items have been for the Corporate Parenting Panel and the Appeals and Complaints Committee. Again, I would think this is perfectly understandable and also unclear as to why the Liberal Democrats apparently believe confidential details exempted and placed in Part B should suddenly be deemed not to be confidential anymore and placed in the public domain. Chair, the other key point I would like to make is that as we are fully aware, decisions on which items are placed in Part B of meetings are rightly based on the advice of the Head of Legal and Democratic Services as the proper officer. I would hope that we can all agree that this process is entirely right and proper. The council's Head of Legal Services is surely the individual best place to make a judgement on information which can and cannot be released into the public domain, particularly when the council could find itself legally challenged for releasing private information about an individual or about a private business. Does anyone really believe that the approach to reviewing decisions on what details should remain confidential is one that should be for elected politicians? My view is that these are clearly matters for our legal officers and should remain so. My amendment therefore calls on the Head of Legal and Democratic Services to present a report to the Constitution Working Group summarising the reasons for which reports have been considered in Part B of any council meeting. But we should leave it at that. I do not accept the premise that at some point the need for this confidentiality, which can involve individuals and private businesses, should expire or that the approach to confidentiality should be for elected politicians to decide. For these reasons, I urge all members to support this amendment.
Councillor Nebbia?
Thank you, Chairman. In seconding the amendment, I'm sure members will agree that everyone associated with this authority will always work in an open, honest and transparent manner. That's why I have some concerns regarding the wording that's being used in the preamble and the motion tabled by councillor Temple. I'm sure it is not intended, but it could be potentially perceived that as a council, we are trying to conceal certain items of business using Part B exemption to prevent public scrutiny, which is definitely not the case. In fact, the evidence would suggest that there are far less Part B reports considered by this council than elsewhere and in actual fact, the opposite is true. Our decisions are based on robust and evidence-based comprehensive reports, where the full implications and impacts, well-known, are fully disclosed in the body of an open, transparent and accessible report. Whether matters are exempted from publication is a matter for officers, specifically the monitoring officer, to determine. The criteria for matters needing an exempted report are clearly established and the application of those rules is both irpolitical and consistently based on professional legal advice. As I might add, decisions on whether the information is subsequently disclosed and made available at a later time. It is important to acknowledge that all members of this council can access all reports, with the obvious exception of matters pertaining disciplinary hearings, for instance, and have the opportunity to raise matters on all these reports, regardless of whether they are exempted. The passage of time can mean that the reasons why some items were exempted from publication can diminish and no longer be relative. However, for some items, it would take a significantly longer period for the passage of time to be such that disclosure would not be detrimental to the council. A good example being where we were seeking to renegotiate commercial terms on a lease following the expiry of the initial lease period. Periodically and systematically reviewing Part B reports to check whether the information contained within is now publishable would be resource-intensive and would require a careful assessment by the monitoring officer and her team alongside the service who led on the initial proposals. Is that really a good investment of their time, rather than the current approach of dealing with requests for publication and release of the Part B report on a case-by-case basis? That said, Chairman, I'm happy to support the amendments to the motion as put forward by the leader and have a more in-depth discussion via the Constitution Working Group on the pros and cons of such an approach. I urge members to support the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. It would have been appropriate, I think, for councillor Hennig to have provided us with the amendment, which runs over two pages, more than a few seconds after we started talking. I find it quite incredulous that Durham County Council would refuse to release information which at a future date is no longer sensitive to the public when even governments, most governments around the world, release information which is classified after a certain period of time. So welcome to the UK's County Council of North Korea.
Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Wilkes references North Korea. I was going to reference the Soviet Union because this reminds me of the debates about Glasnost, the practice of more open consultancy of government and wider dissemination of information. Those of you back to the 1980s will remember that. Yes, it's difficult to comment on the amendment that we've already just seen flashed up in front of us, but the gist of it, I think, is that the amendment seeks to commission a report that says, explains why we do what we do, which I think the leader has already sort of explained why we do what we do. Whereas the motion, as I read it, isn't asking for a free-for-all for personal information and licensing and et cetera, et cetera. It's asking that a report comes to Constitution Working Group to create a protocol to review on a regular basis decisions that have been exempt. Clearly, one would imagine such a protocol would not be saying, we're going to review the hundreds of licensing decisions every year. And I would suggest the leadership of the council can't have it both ways. On the one hand, councillor Hennig says, we've only got a handful of cabinet decisions falling to Part B, so what are you complaining about? On the other hand, councillor Nebbia says it would be resource-intensive to review all these decisions and therefore impractical. You can't have it both ways, leadership of the council, I'm afraid. There's nothing at all unreasonable in councillor Temple's motion, which is calling for a report to be brought to CWP outlining a protocol as to how this would be achieved. And the one thing that nobody has mentioned is what do other councils do? I'm sure there's good practice out there with other councils, with the LGA, et cetera, and I think that should be brought in the report to the Constitutional Working Party. That's all I've got to say. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Marshall?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Temple mentioned courts heard in public. As a magistrate for 14 years, most of the cases that came in front of me were indeed in private. As one of the chairs of licensing, I rely on the county solicitors and that department to recommend to my committee any items that need to be considered to go into Part B. I'm not qualified to make legal decisions and do not wish to look at the complex reasoning sometimes needed to be investigated to arrive at a decision to place an item into Part B. This is for legal to look at and not elected members. And I think the decision has to be that legal continues to look at it and not elected members. So I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Clare?
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to speak about this because it strikes me that everybody's saying the same thing. Until I was outraged at the references to North Korea and the Soviet Union. Have you taken leave of your senses on that, for goodness sake? What this does is it highlights what this is, which is just an attempt to blackout the council as this secretive kind of organisation which doesn't allow people to have sight of key issues. What the motion does here is it is asking this council to consider whether it matters that we release Part B matters when they no longer matter. And you're bringing that before an election, but in the middle of a Covid crisis with an economic and climate crisis looming. Now, the leader has been absolutely specific on this, that there is nothing wrong with discussing the principle. And as far as councillor Bell is concerned, you were talking about all these things you wanted bringing to a meeting of the Constitutional Working Group. That's what the amendment does. It asks that a report be brought to the Constitutional Working Group. You were supporting the amendment, not the motion. Now, it's quite clear that here is a technical issue which is worthy of discussion and nobody is denying that. What is being said in this amendment is that it is an issue which requires discussion and that therefore a report on it needs to be brought to the Constitutional Working Group so that the Constitutional Working Group can properly look at the implications of it. Now, it strikes me that that is a no-brainer. It gives councillor Temple, or should give councillor Temple, the substance of what he's asking and it does so in a measured and sensible amount. I've finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shields?
Thank you, Chair. Durham County Council have often recommended that their standards on openness and transparency need to be adhered to and followed by other councils. However, this particular issue about Part B is nothing to do with the Official Secrets Act. It's about the same, what we're talking about, openness and transparency. Whilst councillor Nebbia refers to the word perception, there could be a general perception by the electorate that there's something to hide and therefore that goes in conflict with the simple fact that it should be open and transparent. And the wording raised by councillor Temple is that the Constitution Working Group develop a protocol, that we're not saying that it's going to happen at a certain time, but we discuss it. And I find it currently abhorrent that we are saying we're going to review the actions and the decision processes and then decide on it. Well, it's a conflict of communication. Let's take this amendment forward and let's vote accordingly because I think that we have the responsibility to our electorate to make sure that they are well aware of information when it's no longer necessary to keep it hidden. And I will be voting for this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Shuttlesworth? Councillor John Shuttlesworth?
Sorry, sorry, I had a problem there, sorry. I was saying prior to local government organisation, you know, the Cabinet and all meetings were pretty open and transparent. You could ask questions, get answers and nothing was really a problem. And I don't see in this day and age why we can't agree with Owen Temple's motion, take it the Constitution Working Group and look at it there and then come back to it with a report of full council. I'm not referring to the Soviet Union or North Korea, but I can think of a few other places like.
Councillor Dunn?
Thank you. I've been looking back over the many consultations which the council's done on the last two years and on a range of issues. Climate change, Horden Master Plan, health visitors and school nurses, long-term empty properties, County Durham Plan, Durham History Centre, Durham Bus Station, special educational needs, street work permits, Digital Durham and many others. Thousands of responses from residents, online, manually and in person, with some proposals, with up to two dozen presentations to residents and also to some of our young people affected by these proposals. Some consultations have had responses into thousands to informed decisions. These consultations do lead to changes in proposals, such as the street work proposals, where 23 changes were made. As the leader has said and set out, there are some very valid and legal circumstances where confidentiality is necessary and appropriate. The point I'm making, though, is that Durham County Council is a listening council, that the tone of this motion and the moving and other speeches imply secrecy and a lack of transparency in decision-making, which is far, far from reality. I'll be supporting the amended motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any more members wishing to speak before I bring in councillor Temple with his right to reply? I'll briefly pause. No one else is registered. Can I bring in councillor Temple with his right to reply?
Thank you, Chair. If I said I was surprised by this amendment, I'd be lying. If I said I was extremely disappointed, I'd be telling the truth. If I said I was distressed, it would be true because people who I respect, the leader and the deputy leader of this council, have, in my view, deliberately sought to mislead this council and the people of this county in what my amendment asked for. It didn't ask for us to put confidential papers about individual people into the public domain. And just to correct him, we had one of those at full council about a head teacher, where a very unfortunate law case... where a very unfortunate law case had ensued. Nobody would expect that to be put in the public domain in all its detail. But we make decisions on a commercial basis. We exclude the press and public for good commercial reasons, but those commercial reasons die. And then these things should be looked at. And all I asked for was we had a system. That system could say for some reports, they will never be suitable for publication because they deal with individual circumstances that are not in the public interest to be known. What my motion asked for is a protocol to review, to sort out the wheat from the chaff and put in public view what the public deserve to know. So if you pass this amendment, which you can do because that's the nature of power, you may just start to support those colleagues who took a more political line on this than I did. I only asked, and I still only ask, for you to reject this amendment, to accept the motion which is completely reasonable. And that's what I'm asking for. You'll do this county a disservice if you vote for this amendment.
Thank you. I'll now hand over to the head of Legal Democrat Services to explain the voting procedure.
Thank you, Chair. So as before, members, when the vote is opened, a box will appear on your screen. The title of the box will show that we are voting on the amendment move by councillor Henig with options to vote for, against or abstain. Select your preference and click submit. And again, it's important that you click submit to register your vote and you will get a green tick which will confirm your vote choice. You can then click done and the box will disappear from your screen. Thank you.
To chair the result. Thank you, members. Therefore, the amendment is carried. Therefore, we now move over to the substantive motion. Is anyone wishing to speak on the substantive motion? Please register to the chat function. No one else registered to speak, therefore we move back to the substantive, vote on the substantive motion. We'll now close the vote. Thank you, members. Four sixty-three against thirty-five abstentions three. Therefore, the motion is carried. Can I now invite? I'll briefly pause while I always cut them off. Thank you, members. Can I now invite councillor Carl Marshall to move his motion, please?
Thanks, Chair. I'm councillor Carl Marshall, Durham County Council's cabinet lead for economic regeneration. It's with a little bit of regret that I feel the need to table this motion to council today. But this is without doubt one of the major challenges that faces our council and our communities if we are to realise our true economic potential in the future. As part of the UK's membership of the EU, County Durham alongside the wider North East has been a major beneficiary of essential funds aimed at supporting key priorities to create growth. From 2020, we would have been set to receive a dedicated £270 million pot for County Durham. This money allowed our council the flexibility to target those most in need within our county and specifically in the past has delivered over 3,000 jobs, supported over 1,000 enterprises across the county, taken five and a half thousand tonnes of greenhouse gas out of the air. And, you know, we've heard from the leader previously around the climate emergency plan. And we're well on our way to delivering on our promises on that, predominantly with EU funds. It's also funding to support our rural communities across the county and supporting rural businesses in particular. And it's supported 43,000 people, including thousands of younger people through our Durham Works programme. Since 2011, when the Tory Lib Dem government introduced massive public sector spending cuts, supposedly reduced the national debt. I'm not sure how that's going at the minute. But as a council, we've received significant spending cuts of over quarter of a billion pounds and money's been siphoned nationally into more affluent parts of the country. During this time, the EU funds have been an absolute lifetime to many communities, businesses and projects in County Durham. The government has previously committed to ensuring that future funding will be no less than what previously received, which is welcomed. However, there's serious concerns and a massive lack of detail as to whether this promise will be followed through. Currently, there's no choice, there's no noise, sorry, from central government that'll work alongside our regional partners like the North East Lepp or indeed Durham County Council. The current governance model allows regional and local priorities to influence how and where money is spent. We want to make sure that decisions relating to our communities are taken as locally as possible and that any funding streams developed allow us to maximise the potential that our area has in terms of jobs, growing our economy and providing the best life chances for all of our residents. Chair, the motion's been circulated to all members, so I don't intend to read through it again. As a council, we'll continue to work with partners across the region and nationally and ensure the government follow through on what they promised. And I hope that all members can support our residents, businesses and our environment by backing this motion today. I'd like to formally move that Durham County Council makes a formal call to government that the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which is due to replace the EU funding, should ensure for County Durham that the allocation of funds be based on need, fair share and ensure the county is in a no worse financial position than it otherwise would have been from 2020 onwards. That is, that the UK Shared Prosperity for County Durham would receive directly a minimum of £270 million. This to be ring fenced directly from the Shared Prosperity Fund and that this be in addition to any competitive bids the county otherwise submits international or devolved programmes, that would have been the case previously. And finally, Chair, that the UK Shared Prosperity Fund at least has equal local autonomy in County Durham to ensure local decision making and control of our investment. And I formally move the motion to full council this morning. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. The motion requires a second, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor Kevin Shaw, portfolio holder for Strategic Housing and Assets. There are a number of points which are a significant concern with the government need to address. Why since hope that the Shared Prosperity Fund matches the existing EU funding of the regions, it is less than the UK would have received had we remained in the EU because a number of subregions have slipped below their threshold that would have qualified them for substantial additional funding. Tees Valley and Durham are in great danger of being shortchanged and traded less favourably than other comparable UK areas. As the EU funding winds down, the UK funding needs to ramp up. In practice, given the inevitable lags between commitments and actual spending and the shortfall in the UK funding in 2020, 21, this looks certain to cause problems further down the line. There is no reassurance at this stage that the SPF funding will be of an equivalent duration to the EU funding it replaces, which will impact significantly on the longer term projects that are often key to successful local and regional development. There is no reference in the spending review to the manifesto commitment that each of the four nations would receive the same as they presently receive from the EU. There is no data on exactly how the funding will be allocated and the authorities would strongly favour a formula based approach rather than the competitive bidding as this will deliver inferior outcomes. And finally, Chair, there's real concern that the government intends to establish highly centralised management structures, removing local knowledge and real engagement in decision making. And this will be a retrogated step. Councillor Marshall has very eloquently raised the local impact, which we very much fear. And I'm very happy to support this motion, which makes a formal call on government. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Napier?
Thank you, Chairman. I speak this morning in support of the motion tabled by councillor Marshall. Chairman, the government first moved to the Shared Prosperity Fund back in 2017, I think probably about 15 months after the EU referendum as a replacement for the EU structural investment funds. This has been in both the 2017 and 19 Conservative manifestos. County Durham has derived massive benefits from these investment funds going back decades, which councillor Marshall has identified. I've been here long enough now, I remember the Regional Selective Assistance, RESHAR, European Regional Development Fund, European Social Fund, Leader Programme, et cetera, where we've derived massive benefits across this county. The government stated that the funding would at a minimum match the EU funding to each area. In the absence of Brexit, County Durham would actually have received substantial additional EU funding for the 2021-27 spending round. This is mainly because our subregion has slipped below the threshold of 75% of EU average GDP per head that would have qualified us for less developed region status. Chairman, as a council, we need to ascertain if the government's one and a half billion Shared Prosperity Fund annual pot contains the additional funding as promised by ministers. There are three distinct areas that require qualification. First, the financial package that I've talked about. Second, how the funding will be allocated. There should be a formula based approach based on need rather than competitive bidding, which is widely seen as wasteful of time and money and poor at delivering better outcomes. And third, and most importantly, the governance arrangements. Councillor Shaw has already mentioned this, but I have concern that the government intends to establish a highly centralised management structure. This would be a retrogated step because as local players, we know our own patch best and we are best placed to make judgements on our priorities. Chairman, I would hope the government would take our concerns into consideration and I would urge members to support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, councillor Owen Gunn, representing William Hunwick, Division and Cabinet Member for Children and Young People's Services. Chair, in supporting this motion fully, I want to focus on young people and particularly on the 16 to 24 year olds living in County Durham who are unemployed and who want to progress to employment or education or training. And I want to focus on Durham Works, which the leader mentioned in his report. This is a huge success story and it's led by Durham County Council and funded through partners, including Durham County Council, but a main one being the European Social Fund. And unfortunately, that funding is ending in the very period when there is the greatest need from our young employed young people in County Durham. A period of rising youth unemployment and the impact of the pandemic on the sectors that usually employ young people, like sport and leisure and hospitality. A time as well when many young people are feeling vulnerable, anxious and disaffected. Durham Works has supported 8,227 young people and 69% of those completing the programme have entered employment and 31% have entered education, training or they've gained a qualification. And the programme, Chair, has had a huge impact at a personal level for the young people involved as many of them come from our most vulnerable groups. There's an obvious economic value in employment of our young people and there's a social value with one pound of investment generating two pounds 69% of social and economic value. That's actually £2.69. Moving. But Chair, there's also undoubtedly a human story of this programme and it's what lies underneath the facts and figures and it's what lends itself to confidence, aspiration and achievement, and it's one that we cannot afford to lose. I support this motion fully and urge everyone to do the same. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. I find this motion a bit of a curate's egg, that's to say, parts of it are excellent. So I'll deal with the less excellent parts to start off with. Firstly, if motions are going to have long preambles, can we proofread them, please? Because phrases like the reduction of 5.54 tonnes of greenhouse reduction and the test valley don't inspire confidence in the research going behind the motion. And leading on from that, you're talking about a 2018 forecast of the effects on the economy of a deal leaving the EU. Well, obviously, given that the terms of the trade deal weren't known until last month, that's obviously got to be questionable. And as is questionable, the status of County Durham as a less developed region. Councillor Marshall couldn't resist a little barbed comment about austerity and I don't know where the government's borrowings got to now. Well, we know where the government's borrowings got to now, it's through the roof on account of the economic effect of the Covid crisis, and that is across the EU. So it is, I would suggest, far from certain that County Durham would necessarily still be in a less developed region status. And certainly, I'm sure the EU will be redoing its numbers on account of Covid. So that's the criticism. The good part, so I'd really agree with what councillor Napier said principally, that the principle that the Shared Prosperity Fund is allocated according to need and not competitive bid is absolutely right. The principle is absolutely right that the allocated money should be controlled and decided upon locally, and it is absolutely right that we represent to government that that should be the case. The only clue in thinking thus far has been last week when Steve Barclay, in answer to the Scottish Finance Secretary, said that their Shared Prosperity Fund money will not be routed through Holyrood. Either being routed to councils or driven nationally from London. Obviously, there are particular political circumstances that would make people a bit wary about giving Holyrood billions and billions of pounds to spend and pretend it's their money that don't apply to us. So we would very much hope that the government would retain local control, sorry, would retain local control and that we would be able to decide how to spend the money allocated and not competitively bid for. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Chair, and I'm going to put my rural champion hat on now and I'm going to speak in support of the motion, which I believe every councillor should be supporting this motion because we owe it to our residents. Because we are a rural county, we do face greater challenges through sparsity deprivation, poverty, we've got low aspirations, low paid work, lower house prices, health and social care inequalities, poor education outcomes and so on. So just about every councillor in this meeting represents a rural area and know the specific challenges faced by their local communities. Now, the UK Shared Prosperity Fund is supposed to reduce those inequalities between the communities and we need to make sure that going forward, that equality, social inclusion, sustainable development are prioritised in rural County Durham and that we receive at the very least the same level of investment as we did before. The Conservatives promised that we'd be no worse off with a Brexit deal and here we are with more uncertainty as to what we will receive and how the money will be spent. As local elected members, Chair, and local decision makers, I believe we're best placed in County Durham to know what's best for our businesses and our residents, and it's absolutely vital that we have the local autonomy in deciding how this funding is awarded as we move forward. I've got some great concerns that in as far as if this is left to ministers to choose how the funding's spent, then we'll get nowhere near what we did before, which is absolutely why this motion is vital, as we need to ensure that the funding goes where it's needed most. If I can remind council that we don't qualify for Rural Services Delivery Grant because ministers don't think we're rural enough, and if that's anything to go by, we'll not see the level of investment we require for our most rural communities. We've got some of the more sparse areas in the country like Weirdale and Teasdale and some of the highest levels of deprivation, so it's absolutely vital. We need to ensure we receive the amount promised. To decide how and where that funding's distributed, so it goes to the people that need it the most. So I would urge every councillor to support the motion, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. Other than councillor Marshall's little dig at our political party, I find myself on the same side as him on this issue, which is quite unusual, but we are both right. It's absolutely clear that the loss of European funding is going to be devastating on our county and on the North East if it's not fully replaced by the UK government. Despite the government making promises to the North East, we still have no certainty on the future funding we need, and I believe we can't trust the Conservative government to match the funding we've had in the past. A promise is a promise, the government needs to fulfil its promise and fulfil it now to make sure our regional economy is not damaged as we move forward and our people can meet their full potential as we come out of this Covid crisis. I fully support the motion, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Clare?
Members will be glad that I've calmed down now and particularly the Labour leadership don't need to worry. I intended to speak and this has been prepared, I'm not going to say anything untoward. DCC has a climate strategy which is acknowledged as top class. Last month, we won the best climate initiative of the year. What you don't know is that also last month, I went to two European corporation conferences at which our climate actions were praised by other people on the European stage. And much of the success is down to the ability of the council's low carbon team to leverage substantial sums of European funding to pay for our climate actions. And in particular, we have a climate team of 20 officers. Now, some councils I deal with, in this age of austerity, have just one and sort of you understand then why we are so successful. The salaries of many of those 20 officers are partly met by European funding. The EU schemes in which we are currently involved will continue to be funded until they end. So this isn't a cliff edge, but if this issue is not resolved satisfactorily, if we do not continue to be funded as we have been, in the next two to three years, this council is going to find itself faced with the issue of whether we abandon our climate response or whether we find the money to employ 20 people and fund their schemes out of budget. And then we'll have to decide what spending we'll have to curtail if we decide to do so. If this climate crisis is about the end of civilisation, this particular funding issue is about the end of our climate plan. The government has already declared a one-year moratorium to enact pilot schemes, so that's one year's funding lost. The motion does nothing but ask the government to deliver on its promise to maintain funding in the way EU funding has been distributed. And I would hope that it is a motion that we can support unanimously in the same way that we've supported the Climate Emergency Plan unanimously. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor John?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Stupdon, representing Coxell Division. I wasn't going to speak on this motion until I heard from councillor Bell, and I just wanted to remind council about some facts. Councillor Marshall set out the effect of austerity on County Durham, the people of County Durham and our economy. Each year, because of the cuts, each year we're losing a quarter of a billion pounds coming into Durham County Council and to the County Durham economy, each and every year.
It's getting a bit ridiculous now, isn't it?
Thank you, councillor Avery. Councillor Bell suggested that national debt was higher as a result of Covid. It's a fact that after 10 years of Conservative government, national debt before Covid and the effects of Covid was higher than when they took office. So let's not lose that myth that Covid has got the national debt out of control. Austerity didn't work and each and every year, County Durham's losing a quarter of a billion pounds. On top of that, in 2021, we stand to lose another quarter of a billion pounds, and that's essential services and spending in our economy in County Durham. Half a billion pounds, that's half, that's £500 million in County Durham. Austerity was, sorry, Brexit was about taking back control. The Prime Minister talked in his election speeches of levelling up. Is that what it means? Is that what it means and it's going to mean to the people of County Durham? £500 million less worth of investment in us and our economy and our services? I'd urge each and every member of this council, whether you're Labour, Lib Dem, Conservative or what, to support this motion. And I'd also ask you all to approach each and every one of our MPs in the county to support this motion. We need to know that they are actually standing up for the people of County Durham and trying to prevent half a billion pounds' worth of cuts to our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just remind members, when you're not speaking, can you please remain on mute? Thank you. Councillor Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Likewise, I wasn't prepared to speak on this motion. I thought it was a given. Why would anybody not want to have the same level of prosperity? I just think it's, we're talking political issues rather than factual issues. There has been a promise made by this government that there will be a levelling up of prosperity and as County Durham, as many other North East councils are suffering from previous austerity, we have to hold the government to account on that. But I would also say one thing further, that we have to ensure that the levelling of process is contained by County Durham across all areas of County Durham, and that's something that we don't see on a regular basis. So I'm very happy to support this motion. I hope everybody else follows likewise, but let's not forget that we're talking about lots of areas in County Durham and not just, say, the A1, A19 corridor area. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Tindley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just want to take a bit of a step back here. I voted Remain for lots of reasons in the referendum and councillor Napier spoke about some of them. Brussels was one of our only friends in the North East, going right back to the 1980s. But I represent a lot of people who voted Leave and a lot of those people who voted Leave had very legitimate reasons for doing so. We've seen 10 years of austerity, we see a region that's fallen behind and we see evidence for that in our less developed status which we would have had. We see less opportunity for our children in a lot of areas and councillor Gunn spoke about that. And also, there was £250 million for the NHS and I won't mention the fish. But one thing is clear, of those people who had legitimate concerns and voted Leave, nobody voted Leave for less money to come into this area. Nobody voted Leave for less local control of that money in this area and nobody who voted Leave voted for less transparency about how that money is spent and allocated in this area. I think what is clear, nobody wants dirty pork barrel politics where money's been allocated not based on need. Now, I've come in and spoken this debate because I listened to what councillor Bell said and it's very, very, very positive that he's saying that money should be allocated on need. Why? Because that means we're going to get a lot in this area. But I'm sorry councillor Bell, the evidence is pointing away from that. If you look what's happened with the Towns Fund, that's a competitive bidding process and yes, it does waste huge amounts of money in terms of preparing bids like that, and I just only hope that we do get in this area what we need. Finally, when we talk about looking at EU and what's happening there at the minute and looking at allocations of funding, they've just announced a £1.8 trillion fund to recover from Covid. We need something similar in this country. Yes, we've got over £2 trillion in our national debt in this country, but we need something similar here. What it would have meant is this county alone would have got over £2 billion over the next six years to redevelop and recover from Covid. Councillor Bell and the government, where is that money for us? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm with councillor Shield here and, you know, it's sad to see politics dragged into this. You know, I think this report for me is something that I would like to support and I wholeheartedly agree with councillor Marshall's request that the Shared Prosperity Funding is targeted to the areas that need it most. But what I would say is, I felt exactly the same way when we were talking about the County Durham Plan. And that rationale that's mentioned in this motion, had that been applied, we may not have seen towns like Chesney Street and others fall behind what I still view as a Durham-centric plan. But in the whole, I support this and we have to move forward together as a council because we all represent this area and it's for the greater good of this area that I'm going to support this motion.
Thank you. I'll briefly pause before I bring in councillor Marshall. No one else has registered? Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Can I just start by thanking all members from across the whole county and of all political parties for the support for the sentiments in the motion? I don't intend to go through and nitpick. I think everybody has made some valid comments in the council meeting this morning. I do want to just come back on one of the comments that councillor Bell made and I think, you know, I'll have to concede that my teachers would agree with him that I fell short on some of the grammar and language that I've used in the motion. I'll make sure that I do much better in the letter this council puts into central government, councillor Bell, and I'll take that slap on the wrist and we'll move forward. I think ultimately, it's the motions to make sure we get the money that we've been promised and let us have control over how we spend it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Well, now we'll move to the vote. Close the vote now, members. Thank you, members, and I'll read out the vote. 401 against, 0 abstentions, 7. Therefore, the motion is carried. Thank you. I'll briefly pause while we show the results. Thank you, members. That moves us on to item 14, questions from members. We have one question received for today's meeting from councillor Wilkes. The question will be sent on to your screens. Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. There are over 6,000 empty homes in County Durham. At the full council budget meeting in March 2018, we agreed to fund three additional staff for the empty homes department for three years. My proposal was, I think, the only opposition budget motion ever to get passed by this authority at a budget meeting. Posts were advertised and three employees appointed who started in June 2018. One left in December 2018 and it took until April 2019 to appoint someone new. Then in December 2019, the manager... Then in December 2019, the manager left and their post was deleted. And in April 2020, the two people who were appointed in June 2018 finished because they had not actually been given three-year contracts, they'd only been given two-year contracts. So over three years, instead of having three new employees, the council had two employees working for less than two years and another position for significantly less than that. And the council got rid of the manager's position. One can only imagine how much more would have been achieved by these staff had we voted, had what we voted on actually been put in place and the department not slashed. And I have to say that the staff are exemplary and the work they've been doing is fantastic. But can the portfolio holder please explain to us why, when we all voted for three posts for three years, the posts were only put in for two years? And most importantly, did he know about it?
Thank you. Can I invite the Cabinet portfolio to respond, please?
Thank you for your question, councillor Wilkes. Firstly, empty properties have always been a priority for the council. And as portfolio holder, I was happy to support your amendment, which then became part of the substantive motion that you then didn't in March 2018. On the basis that we have a need to bring as many empty homes as possible back into use and help us tackle homelessness and meet our housing strategy ambitions. It is important to consider the outcomes being delivered from whatever investment we make and review our performances to date in considering the best approach to achieve the outcomes we all support. In the financial year prior to 2018, the empty property team were responsible for bringing 198 properties back into use. In the following year, with the three additional members of staff in place, the number brought back into use dropped to 186, a year-on-year reduction of 12, before recovering in 2019, 20 to 212, 14 more. As you'll be aware, at the time the motion was agreed in 2018, the intention was to provide additional funding for these posts for three years, funded by an expectation of additional new homes bonus being generated. In terms of recruitment, you're right, in June 2018, following the budget amendment, three officers were originally contracted for a two-year period and as you stated, for a four-month period, this number reduced to two. I'm advised that when the post is classed as temporary, it is council policy to initially recruit on a two-year basis with the opportunity to extend for further years. Whilst one of the posts was not filled for four months, this was despite the efforts of the management of the service, with the nor of adverts being placed to try to recruit for the vacancy. Unfortunately, we were unable to fill the role due to a lack of experienced or qualified applicants at the time. The service did, however, make an internal appointment with a view of training the officer which continues to do. This person was still employed by the team providing an important role to support this priority agenda. In April 2020, when the initial contracts for the two officers were ending, lockdown was in place and there were few opportunities to take forward the empty property work. A decision was therefore taken to review the empty property work against the targets and past performance and look at the potential of work progression through the pandemic. The result of this initial review by the service management was that two of the three contracts were not to be extended with further work to be looked at on how we could better deliver on the outcomes that were agreed by full council. Cabinet will consider in due course if the review will meet the expectations and outcomes on which council previously agreed the additional funding. Officers were also minded at the time that the budget provision for these posts was due to come to an end at the end of this financial year. It would be quite wrong of me to preempt any decision regarding future funding for these posts outside of the three-year grade, as this will be brought forward next month. It is clear to me that unless you deal with the problems of creating long-term void properties, the opportunities of convincing or incentivising an owner to bring it back into use are limited. Where the council has intervened in a coordinated way, we have seen a dramatic improvement in reducing the numbers of empty properties. Examples such as in Asian Colliery and Furry Hill Station, where selective landowner licensing has been implemented previously and the reduction of the local lettings agency, which is buying up or renting empty properties to help our most disadvantaged people. Thank you, councillor Wilkes.
Chair?
Yes, councillor, do you have something to mention?
I think it's pretty clear to me that what we agreed as full council wasn't implemented. We didn't get what we were asked for. I have noticed that the funding of 108,000 that was going to be deleted from this department appears...
Wilkes, are you asking a question?
Yes, I am, yes. Appears not now to be being deleted. And so despite the council having gone against the wishes of elected members, could the portfolio holder please give us assurances that we will continue to have at least six staff working solely on empty homes and a manager with sufficient time to assist with this? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilkes. This council has, just before last Christmas, submitted one of the most comprehensive selective licensing schemes in the country to support the quality and management of the private rented accommodation, with over 40% of the private rented sector to be the focus of intensive work. One of the primary objectives of which is to deal with low demand and if approved by the Secretary of State, we will see a significant increase in resource dealing with the problems associated with the private rented sector and we will also be using a multi-agency approach. We've also been successful in bringing over £2 million worth of grant to help residents in field poverty, which we hope will bring yet more properties back into use. And in harden funding is now in place to start the regeneration of one of the areas most affected by empty properties. The measures that have been put in place have reduced management across the service, but this has not impacted on either the performance or capacity of the team, which has remained consistent. I would like to take this opportunity, as I know a scrutiny committee have also done on a number of occasions, to thank all of the officers involved in our housing service, particularly the dedication over these challenging times in catering people in their tendencies, the groundbreaking work in preventing evictions and the support they have provided to over 100 rough slavers to find accommodation, as well as ensuring every one of the rough slavers were housed within 24 hours of the government ask. Thank you, councillor Wilkes.
Thank you, portfolio holder.
That was the last item on the agenda and concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. If everyone in the meeting could please stay seated and remain silent until the broadcast ends. Thank you.